And now for today's program. Dr. Brian J. Doherty, Assistant Professor of History at Virginia Commonwealth University, is an expert on the civil rights era and the Commonwealth. He is a great friend of the VMHC, having worked with us on a number of past programs. And Brian is also the co-editor, with Charles C. Bolton, of With All Deliberate Speed: Implementing Brown versus Board of Education, and with Brian Grogan, of A Little Child Shall Lead Them: A Documentary Account of the Struggle for School Desegregation in Prince Edward County, Virginia. Also the author of Keep On Keeping On: The NAACP and the Implementation of Brown versus Board of Education in Virginia. Please join me in giving a warm welcome to Brian Doherty.
Thank you all, and good afternoon. It's always a pleasure to be here at the Virginia Museum of History and Culture, and I would like to thank all of the individuals that I've worked with over the years for their support and assistance. Several of them are here in the audience today, so I'd like to thank them for coming out. Particularly like to thank Graham Dozier for the invitation to present here a banner lecture. It's an honor and a privilege. Graham has told me I've got about three hours to talk, so we'll go ahead and get started. I do want to start on a little bit of a sad note. I dedicate this lecture to a good friend of mine. Well, didn't expect to get emotional, but Ed Peoples passed away this weekend, and Ed was, you know, strongly committed to civil rights and social justice, and he will be So on the screen you have my principal scholarship on this subject matter. Today's lecture is going to be coming primarily from the book in the center, and this is essentially the argument about the NAACP's role in the school desegregation process in Virginia. A synthesis of this entire book was included in my first book, which as you can see, came out in 2008 from the University of Arkansas Press. With All Deliberate Speed examines the school desegregation process in 12 states around the country, Virginia being one of them. And then my most recent book, which Michael just mentioned, came out this summer. This is about the school desegregation process in Prince Edward County, Virginia. So this lecture is primarily about the NAACP and its role in the school desegregation process, and my principal argument in the book that this lecture is based on is that the NAACP was much more powerful and important, it had a much stronger influence on the school desegregation process than has been previously recognized by scholars. And what I argue in the book, and what I firmly believe, is that the NAACP's efforts strongly shaped the trajectory of school desegregation in Virginia, and in many other southern states as well, and that once we understand the role of the NAACP, it alters our understanding of the school desegregation process itself. And I hope you'll see how that plays out as I go through today's lecture. So starting with Brown versus Board of Education, I do think it's important to recognize that one of the five cases that made up Brown versus Board of Education was based here in Virginia, in Prince Edward County, as I've mentioned previously. A student's strike there in 1951 led to a lawsuit that was then bundled together by the United States Supreme Court in Brown versus Board of Education. The principal attorneys that handled that litigation are here on the screen. Many of these individuals will go on to very prominent careers in the judiciary and so forth. Thurgood Marshall, of course, being the first African-American United States Supreme Court Justice. To his left and right, I highlight the role and the importance of Virginia's preeminent, although certainly not only, civil rights attorneys. And that would be to Thurgood Marshall's left, to our right, Oliver Hill, Oliver Whitehill. The two of them, Thurgood and Oliver, had a very strong personal relationship. They graduated from Howard University Law School at the same year, were first and second in their class, and lifelong friends and partners in this struggle for civil rights. To our left, to Marshall's right, is Spotswood Robinson, another individual with a strong connection to Howard University, and another kind of lifelong advocate for social justice and civil rights here in Virginia. The court itself that hands down Brown versus Board of Education, shown here on the screen, is led, starting in 1953, by Earl Warren, Chief Justice here in the center of the court. It was Warren who essentially cohesively brings the court together to rule unanimously in Brown versus Board of Education. That school segregation was unconstitutional, and unconstitutional because it was a violation of the equal protection rights of African-American students. Essentially argued that school segregation was unconstitutional because it was harmful for African-American schoolchildren. The Brown decision's impact is extensive. Seventeen states required segregation as of May 1954, when the decision is handed down, and they're shown here in green. Four additional states allowed for localities to establish their own segregation policies kind of at will, so it was a local option available in those states. And as you can see, this combination of 21 states represents a substantial portion of the country and a tremendously large number of students. Now, Brown versus Board of Education rules that school segregation is illegal, but it does not set up any sort of a process whereby the implementation of Brown versus Board of Education was established. The Supreme Court issues a follow-up decision in 1955, commonly known as Brown II, that lays out the implementation guidelines itself. This decision was also fairly brief and fairly general, seven paragraphs only. As you can see, the principal points here, school districts themselves are technically responsible for the implementation of the decision. Various delays are deemed acceptable by the Supreme Court. Delays, for instance, for constructing new schools, delays for doing surveys of school attendance zones, those sorts of things would be allowed to prevent an immediate implementation. No set timeline for the beginning or the conclusion of the school desegregation process. Many people are familiar with the phrase "with all deliberate speed." That's the phrase from the title of my first book, and that comes from the Brown II decision. So the Supreme Court is kind of laying out its hope for speedy implementation, but not setting a timeframe when it should begin or when it should be completed by. And finally, the lower federal courts, the federal district courts, and then the Federal Circuit Courts of Appeal, would hear most of the litigation regarding the implementation of Brown versus Board of Education. For the NAACP, that was oftentimes a detriment, to be perfectly honest. Most of the federal district court judges were, if not outrightly opposed to desegregation, they were somewhat hesitant, to put it mildly. They were white men, by and large, just a handful of women on the federal judiciary by this point. There were no African-American justices, and so, and those federal district court judges and circuit courts of appeal judges came from the region in which they served, which meant they were native Southerners. And it's not always a personal opinion which slowed the desegregation process. They also, those who ordered implementation, faced ostracism in their communities and sometimes outright hostility. And so there were a variety of different factors that led many federal court judges to slowly allow for the desegregation process to unfold. Now, how does that process look in the early years after Brown versus Board of Education? On the screen, we're looking at the fall of 1957, and you can see the, essentially, the former Confederacy on the screen. Desegregation begins by choice in the border states and in the Upper South, in the immediate aftermath of Brown versus Board of Education. States and localities made the decision to begin to administer their schools without regard to race, and in many cases, this allows for the admission of African-American students into school districts, whether it be Delaware, Maryland, West Virginia, Kentucky, on over into Missouri, Oklahoma, and so forth. And so the process of school desegregation begins in the Upper South almost immediately after Brown. In the remainder of the southern states and the heart of the Confederacy, the process was not undertaken on its own volition, or on the administration of state government or local government. It's going to require litigation, right? And so the NAACP now is going to be returning to the federal courts in order to bring about the process of school desegregation in the remainder of the Confederacy. The process meant that when local school boards chose not to implement Brown versus Board of Education on their own, the burden fell to African-American parents to request a transfer of their child into a formerly all-white school. These transfer requests had to be administered in person at the school board office or at the school itself, and as you might imagine, this was, you know, a difficult process, sometimes a dangerous process, and certainly an unnerving process. I'm not 100% certain why the gentleman in the back of the photograph has a bat, but it certainly sent, yes, it certainly sends a message to this parent who's trying to enroll his child in the school, and perhaps to the child himself. What this meant was that after Brown II is handed down in 1955, that the burden of school desegregation falls back onto the NAACP's attorneys. Here, Robert Carter, Thurgood Marshall's right-hand man for much of the period that we're talking about, and the two Virginia attorneys that I mentioned previously. As the NAACP begins to plot out its next steps, and as the NAACP begins to process litigation, trying to force compliance in southern localities across the region, we saw the rise of a counteracting force, which of course is the massive resistance movement, the rise of white segregationist organizations, and the adoption of state laws, the revision of state constitutions, all of which was done to prevent school desegregation, and perhaps more importantly for this lecture, to target the proponents of school desegregation. Meaning that a number of the massive resistance laws that were adopted in Virginia and in other southern states were aimed at the NAACP, at its attorneys, as a way of trying to encourage them to no longer file school desegregation lawsuits, or at the very least, to make the process more difficult. This is a photograph of Ed's. He often used to joke that you might think that you're looking at a Tea Party image from 2010, but in fact, this is, this is Powhatan County, as you can see, from the 1950s. The same sentiment now that the federal court, the US Supreme Court, and the other judges are now enforcing or forcing a change upon southern society that was not welcomed by many of the white residents is something that will resonate throughout the massive resistance movement. During the period of massive resistance, as I mentioned, we're going to see the rise of all sorts of new segregationist organizations. In Virginia, the most prominent will be the Defenders of State Sovereignty and Individual Liberties. The Defenders is born, not coincidentally, in Prince Edward County, where that 1951 student strike and then lawsuit take place. It will grow to become the most prominent segregationist organization in Virginia during this entire process. We will also see the birth of other organizations elsewhere in the South, as well as the revival of longstanding white supremacist organizations such as the Ku Klux Klan. The media in Virginia, of course, at the time was segregated. We have newspapers that cater to the African-American community and vice versa. Most of the white newspapers supported this concept of resistance and delay or outright refusal to comply. On the screen, we have a photograph of James Jackson Kilpatrick, who was editor of the Richmond News Leader, and a very, very strong proponent of massive resistance. He encourages the General Assembly to adopt a resolution of interposition, as you can see here, which passes by wide, wide margins in early 1956. And then he is an individual that will go on to become a very prominent leader of the conservative media movement in the 1960s, 70s, and 80s, as the, excuse me, the author of this syndicated column, A Conservative View. One of the most important individuals in the massive resistance movement in Virginia, and the individual who coined the term "massive resistance," is our US Senator Harry Flood Byrd, Sr., who represented Virginia in the Senate from 1933 to 1965. Prior to that, he was a Virginia governor, and as governor, he created what many of you all will remember as the Byrd Organization, or the Byrd Machine, a very strong political entity that dominated Virginia politics for much of the mid-20th century. Byrd was a strong proponent of resistance. He wanted to position Virginia as a leader of the South again, as it had been back in the 1860s, and he was very strongly concerned about the growth of the federal government and its power, also its spending in the 1930s, 1940s, and end of the 1950s. With Byrd's blessing and encouragement from media and segregationist organizations, the Virginia General Assembly adopts a platform of massive resistance laws in 1956, 23 different laws, seven of which were targeted at the NAACP. This entire program was aimed at delaying the process of school desegregation, making it more difficult, and it entailed a variety of different provisions. Most important for our discussion are the anti-NAACP laws, which did things like try to collect membership data and financial data of the organization, led to the attempted disbarment of several of the attorneys that we'll be discussing today. And the other important provision, most important provision, would be the school closing laws, which authorized the governor of Virginia to close any school that would be ordered, integrated by federal courts, which is going to happen in just a few short years. So as things heat up in Virginia, it's important to know that the school desegregation process, which had already begun in the Upper South and the border states, it does start to creep into the former Confederacy via court orders. NAACP units, just like in Virginia, had filed school desegregation lawsuits in 1955, and particularly in 1956, and those school desegregation lawsuits had led to federal court rulings ordering the admission of African-American students into formerly all-white schools. The beginnings of the school desegregation process in many of these states was not a welcome change, and in fact, brought about violent responses in a number of different communities, such as, as you can see here, Clinton, Tennessee. This is just outside of Knoxville. And one that many people are familiar with, and this is Little Rock, Arkansas. Elizabeth Eckford, one of the Little Rock Nine, here on her way to try and enter into the school facing quite a bit of hostility, as you can see. Now, President Eisenhower was a bit conflicted about the school desegregation process. Eisenhower was the gentleman that appointed Earl Warren to the Supreme Court in the early 1950s. Earl Warren here, sitting on Eisenhower's left. He would later go on to say that it was the biggest damn fool mistake I've ever made in my life, because Eisenhower was not interested in reducing the Republican Party's chances in the South. He was also a gradualist himself, in terms of his opinions about racial change, and he therefore chose not to take a leading role in the implementation of Brown versus Board of Education. But I will say, and of course, we must recognize, that when things came to a head in Little Rock, and when the governor of Arkansas, Orville Faubus, refused to admit those nine students that had been ordered admitted by the federal courts, President Eisenhower does dispatch the 101st Airborne, and does federalize the Arkansas National Guard to force the compliance on local officials, and it does begin the desegregation process in the community. Nonetheless, Eisenhower was not inclined to go much further, and certainly not to take much initiative in the desegregation process, and as a result, it continues to proceed quite slowly in the late 1950s. An image here on the screen showing you the status of school desegregation in the fall of 1958. As you can see now, Virginia has experienced no desegregation as of that point, and has aligned itself pretty clearly with the Deep South in terms of the process. Desegregation has continued to unfold in the Upper South, the border states, and in the central states, including Arkansas and Tennessee. The two photographs I just showed, we're seeing the school desegregation process unfold under court order, under federal court order. Things come to a head in Virginia in 1958. The state NAACP's legal staff, shown here on the screen, again highlighting Oliver Hill, had filed a handful of school desegregation lawsuits in 1956 to force the state of Virginia to begin the desegregation process. Those lawsuits filed against Norfolk, Newport News, Charlottesville, and Arlington, that's in the spring of 1956. Litigation is also renewed against Prince Edward County at the same time. The federal courts hear these cases over the course of the next two years or so, and without going into a tremendous amount of detail, by the fall of 1958, we have federal court orders applicable to several of those localities, much to the chagrin of the state's leaders, who had repeatedly revised the massive resistance laws as an attempt to try to forestall these changes from taking place. In Virginia, in the fall of 1958, rather than integrate these schools under federal court order, the governor implements the school closing litigation, excuse me, the school closing legislation that had been passed in 1956, and closes schools in several of the localities that I've just mentioned. The schools that are closed, there are nine schools that are closed, they're all predominantly white schools, because white children were not seeking to integrate into African-American schools. It's all a one-way street, if you will, and so small numbers of African-American students had been ordered admitted into all-white schools. Those are the schools that are affected, therefore, those are the schools that were closed. About 15,000 students are put out of school as a result of this decision, which, as you can see, is national news. In the affected localities, the state provides tuition grants, which is taxpayer money, sometimes called scholarships, to the students that were affected, and those white students then enroll in newly-created private academies in Norfolk, in Charlottesville, in Warren County, Virginia, up near Shenandoah National Park. And this process is going to continue moving forward as school desegregation expands. You can see the names of many of these schools. They all received these tuition grant funding. You can see how much the public schools had been funded, and substantially less money is going into these private schools. So individuals are willing to accept a lesser quality education, so long as it would remain segregated. Now, the NAACP files litigation against the school closings almost immediately, and that litigation is going to go through both state and federal courts throughout the fall of 1958 into early 1959. At that point, the federal and state courts ruled that Virginia's school closing law was unconstitutional, and the process kind of comes to a grinding halt. Governor Alman has to decide at that point how to respond, whether to adopt new legislation at preserving segregation, or whether to move forward with token compliance with the federal courts. Alman was an attorney, former Attorney General of the state. He was quite aware of what was happening around the South. He, I think, foresaw desegregation regardless of what steps were taken, and so Alman decides to comply. School desegregation begins in Virginia in February of 1959, almost exactly five years after Brown versus Board of Education. Twenty-one students in a small number of schools, initially in Norfolk and Charlottesville, excuse me, Norfolk and Arlington, then very quickly followed by Alexandria, a few months later in Charlottesville. This is the beginning of the process. These children faced a difficult experience in many cases, something that we can talk about in more detail if you all are curious. Now, the massive resistors were furious about these changes, and they referred to Governor Alman as a Benedict Arnold, a traitor, a race traitor. He survived an assassination attempt, a bomb scare, vile, vile threats to his life and that of his family. He would, his relationship with Harry Byrd was severed permanently, and many of his dreams of a future career in the judiciary probably with him. One Virginia county there where the student's strike occurred in 1951, and the original lawsuit chose to chart a path that's unique even to the South, and that is Prince Edward County, when ordered desegregated by federal courts in 1959. County Board of Supervisors voted to rescind the taxes that funded the public school system, closing all the public schools in Prince Edward County for five years, rather than integrate, and leaving the African-American schoolchildren in the county largely uneducated. This particular scenario wouldn't be rectified by the United States Supreme Court until 1964, when the county was forced to reopen its public schools. And so the process of initial school desegregation, the beginnings, as charted in some of the principal southern states here on the screen, Virginia, as I've indicated, in 1959, and Mississippi being the last holdout, no desegregation whatsoever until 10 years after Brown versus Board of Education. In each of these states, after initial desegregation begins, we'll have a process of token desegregation, minimal desegregation, a shift from outright resistance to token compliance. And you can see some of the principal points about tokenism here on the screen. Small number of African-American students attending mostly white schools. A statistic that's commonly cited here, 2% of African-American students in the fall of 1964, 10 years after Brown versus Board of Education. Initially accepted by the federal courts, for, again, a variety of different reasons, and will increase more rapidly after 1965 as a result of changes in the US Congress and changes among the judiciary itself. Token school desegregation meant a small number of students in formerly all-white schools. So give you an example from the city of Richmond, 1963. It's about 225 African-American students in the public schools, out of an African-American student population of about 22,000. That's token school desegregation. Famous story of Ruby Bridges down in New Orleans. Here's a photograph of one of the African-American students. He was the, Louis Cousins was the only student to integrate Maury High School in 1959. As you can imagine, this was a challenging experience, and one that he speaks of. This tokenism and the slow pace of desegregation angered and frustrated the NAACP, even as it angered and frustrated the segregationists also, right? They wanted complete segregation, and the NAACP is pushing for immediate compliance. And so we have frustration on both of the ends of the spectrum, if you will. The NAACP's principal attorneys, including in this photograph, quite a very young Henry Marsh, in the middle of the screen, have to return to the federal courts and expand the number of lawsuits. We're going to go from litigation against five localities, it's going to grow to 10, and eventually 15, and 20. By the early 1960s, the NAACP will be handling school desegregation lawsuits against about 32 different localities. And at the same time, the NAACP is encouraging those localities to go from a small number of students to a more substantial number of students over time as well, combating the slow pace of desegregation. In 1965, this comes to a head when the NAACP launches a new In 1965, this comes to a head when the NAACP launches a new wave of lawsuits against the pace of desegregation and the acceptance of delaying measures. We're going to see a raft of about a dozen, actually it ends up being more than a dozen, school desegregation lawsuits filed in 1965 against localities all over the state of Virginia. This particular press release mentions Halifax County, I believe it is, the 13th lawsuit. But this, in the same year, we have litigation filed against Goochlin County, Hanover County, many, many other counties in South Side, Virginia, the city of Petersburg, and most notably for our discussion, New Kent County, Virginia, just about 30 minutes east of here. In New Kent County, there had been no compliance with Brown versus Board Education 11 years after the decision was handed down. The county maintained an all-white K-12 or grades 1 through 12 school, as you can see here on the screen, and not far down the road, an all-black combined school, elementary, middle, and high school, known as the George Watkins School. The county maintained these two entirely segregated schools despite the fact that the county's population was residentially mixed, which meant that African-Americans that lived out in the eastern edge of the county towards West Point boarded a school bus, came down to Highway 249, rode right past the white school, and continued on down the road to George W. Watkins School, as did white schoolchildren living closer to Richmond in the opposite direction. This was a clear example of resistance to school desegregation on the part of local officials. And so, the NAACP files a lawsuit in New Kent, along with these other, you know, these other cases that I've just indicated, and New Kent is the case that ends up finding its way in 1968 to the United States Supreme Court. The court by the late 60s is a little bit different. One thing that you'll notice right away is the addition of Thurgood Marshall to the Supreme Court under President Lyndon Johnson. You'll see that Earl Warren is still chief justice of the Supreme Court. And I would also note that the Supreme Court by the late 60s has become a bit flustered and a bit frustrated with the slow pace of school desegregation in the southern states. The court had periodically issued decisions to try to spur on this process, had tried to encourage a quickening of the pace, but the southern resistance had maintained itself pretty adequately, pretty strongly. In 1968, in the Green versus New Kent County case, the Supreme Court kind of changes its tact and issues a decision that is quite forceful. The Green versus New Kent County Supreme Court decision essentially orders the southern school districts to begin the school desegregation process immediately. It includes the word "now." It says that there had been too long of a delay and that the south was no longer able to maintain any school systems that could be recognizably identifiable by race. Time had come for the south to move towards unitary school systems, and not just in terms of the student body, but in terms of transportation, in terms of teaching staff and administrative staff, in terms of sports and athletics. They issue a series of what are known as the "green factors" that would allow local or lower-level federal courts to determine if compliance had been achieved or not. The following year, the Supreme Court's going to reiterate its decision after being challenged by the state of Mississippi in another important decision, which kind of backs up its new, its reentrance, I would say, into the school desegregation process. And so, you'll see photographs like this in the New Kent County prom. As you can see, in 1970, you're starting to see a pretty substantial change in the student bodies of many of the schools that are integrated. Here, you've got a photograph from Arlington, just about the same time period, and kind of emphasizing the fact that after these decisions are handed down, southern localities are forced to comply, particularly when the NAACP followed up with additional litigation or followed up with additional hearings to require that southern localities abide by the green decision. In New Kent County, compliance was achieved by taking the African-American school and converting it into the elementary school, and then taking the white school and converting it into the middle school and the high school, so that every student in the county from that point forward, those that stayed in the public schools, and most did, would then attend the elementary school together, and then attend middle school and high school together. And as you can see, that sort of a compliance mechanism was fairly easy to adopt and implement, and with some success, in counties like New Kent and others in more rural parts of the state. It's not to say that there weren't challenges and problems. One thing I would emphasize is that the African-Americans, the African-American schools were sometimes closed as part of the process, that the African-American schools were more likely to become the elementary school than to become the middle school or the high school, that when the schools are integrated, many of the icons that had been, and the symbols that had been important to the African-American communities are removed, and the school names that tend to reside, that tend to continue, would be names that some of the African-American students found offensive, a sports team named after the Rebels or the Confederates or something along those lines. Even within the schools, scholars have documented what we refer to as second-generation segregation, which continues to be a problem even in the present day. Things like tracking, disciplinary records, and so forth, showing that there are still discrepancies in terms of the education that's accomplished within, quote-unquote, "integrated" schools. Urban areas tended to be a bit more difficult than the rural areas in terms of compliance and in terms of accomplishing schools that were integrated, that were unitary, that reflected the local populations. The principal reason for the challenge in urban areas is residential segregation laws. So whereas New Kent County had blacks and whites living spread out throughout the county, as do many other areas of Virginia, in cities, the Commonwealth had adopted residential segregation laws back in the 1910s, preventing African-Americans from living in certain neighborhoods and essentially combining them to certain parts of the cities. Those residential laws are then going to be heightened or highlighted or kind of, you know, reiterated in a way by mortgage companies and real estate companies, practices that, including redlining, as you can see on the screen, that confine African-Americans to certain neighborhoods and at the same time, confine whites to other neighborhoods. Now, what this meant was that in order to integrate schools in urban areas, you have to transport students, you have to bus them, right? So in order to integrate schools out in the west end, the near-west end, even in the fan, in certain areas of South Side across the river, you're going to require school buses now. As I've already indicated, New Kent County was busing for decades to preserve segregation. Now, the order on the part of the federal courts in Richmond by this judge was to use busing to promote integration. Judge Robert Marriage, fairly well-known in this community, orders busing in the city of Richmond in order to accomplish integration as it was, you know, as he understood it based on the green decision and subsequent decisions. In Richmond, it ended up being about 13,000 students out of about a 50,000 student population in 1970. Other judges are going to require the same measures in cities all across the state of Virginia, across the south, and also across northern cities as well by the late 1960s and early 1970s. For this ruling, Robert Marriage was forced to live with the protection of federal marshals for two years. His dog was shot, his house was vandalized, he sent his wife and children to live away, to move to another community for part of the time because of the hostility that he received, that he engendered on the part of local residents, protests such as the one you have here on the screen and many, many others. It's also important to recognize that busing leads to white flight, the abandonment of the city environs for surrounding counties in this area, as you can see on the screen, but in metropolitan areas all throughout the south and around the country. This is not a new phenomenon by any stretch of the imagination. Suburbanization goes back to the early 1900s, and it had picked up after World War II as well, but we see a tremendous increase in suburbanization as a result of the busing orders in the early 1970s, and this will continue on, as you can see, for many decades. The important thing to recognize is that as the cities become less white and increasingly black, it becomes impossible to have an integrated school district, right? So white flight undermines the ability to integrate schools because the districts become majority one race or another. Richard Nixon is elected president in 1968, and it represents a political shift in the country, first Republican president since Eisenhower, who was a moderate, and prior to him, the first Republican president since Hoover. So this is a pretty substantial political change. Nixon had campaigned in part on a southern strategy to win the support of white southern voters, who were oftentimes upset with the Civil Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act and so on. And Nixon comes out publicly in opposition to busing, and this also, I think, heightens the tensions over this particular process of implementation. More importantly, than Nixon's personal views, he begins to bring about changes in various realms of the federal government that had been forcing compliance with the Supreme Court's orders. The predecessor, the Department of Education and so forth, begin to change their policies, and the Department of Justice changed their policies under Richard Nixon. So does the nature and makeup of the Supreme Court. As you can see on the screen here, Nixon is able to appoint four Supreme Court justices during his first term in the White House. These justices begin to chart a very different perspective on the school desegregation process. They are less inclined to support busing, they want it narrowly tailored, and eventually are going to rule, place severe restrictions on the busing process. And as time goes by, with the addition of a whole slew of subsequent Supreme Court justices from Republican presidents who tended to have a different approach to government in terms of limited federal involvement, you'll see the court essentially remade between the late 1960s, starting with Nixon's four appointments. We're going to have Ford is going to appoint one, I believe, Reagan will appoint three, George Herbert Walker Bush is going to appoint two, Carter does not appoint any Supreme Court justices, which meant that by 1991, there's only one Democrat on the bench, Byron White. And as the judiciary changes, so does its requirements with regard to school desegregation. We start to see a strong shift towards neighborhood schools, we see a strong shift towards the elimination of race-based policy, right? So in order to bus, you have to consider the race of all the students and where they're going to go in order to accomplish a unitary school system, but now you're increasingly discouraged from using race in the assignment of students whatsoever. And this leads to the end of busing in most communities, starting in the late 80s and really culminating in the late 90s. This is when busing is going to end in a variety of prominent cities around the country, including Richmond and Norfolk and others here in Virginia. And as the busing process ends, again, remembering this neighborhood segregation, as the busing is reduced and eventually eliminated, we return to neighborhood schools. That means in urban areas, we begin to resegregate those schools. And so, students return to schools closest to their homes, because those homes had been residentially segregated for 75 years or so. The communities still tend to be residentially segregated in the city of Richmond and elsewhere, and therefore, the schools reflect that longstanding residential segregation. It has an impact on the schools in terms of academic performance. You can see quite clearly that the achievement gap between black and white students had been narrowing until the end of busing. It dips pretty noticeably. It has closed in the last few years in terms of the achievement gap. But other aspects of what we today call diversity, the benefits of diversity, things like graduation rates and college attendance rates, these all tend to benefit from diversity. These things have also suffered as a result of the changes that we've indicated. And so, in cities like Richmond, you see a return to schools that reflect the communities around them. In Richmond, and many of the cities we do because of white flights, have a majority-black school system. In Richmond today, it's about 75% or so African-American, in the range of 10% or so white, 15% or so Hispanic, the public school system. So not a lot of diverse students to work with in order to create a diverse school system. But more importantly, what we see is that the white students tend to be congregated in schools in the white neighborhoods, right? And of course, this is a big issue with the latest plans for redistricting, rezoning, and so forth that we've been discussing in the schools more recently, whether it be Fox or Cary or Mary Mumford or any of these other schools that are located in neighborhoods that were predominantly white. And that is where I will complete my talk. So, thank you so much. Graham told me I now have two and a half hours for questions.
Hi, thank you for being here today. I have two questions, one of which is, you mentioned that in Virginia, at one time, there were 225 black students who were integrated, leaving another 22,000 who were not. What happened to that large number? Were they left in their black schools or...?
That is correct. So during the period of token desegregation, as I indicated, the shift of students goes from all-black schools toward what had been all-white schools. The students who want to go to the white schools for whatever reason would apply for a transfer. That would go through a whole series of administrative steps. So one of the things that Virginia sets up is a pupil placement board that's overseen by three government appointees here in Richmond, so they decide if those black students would be allowed into the white school or not. And when those transfer requests are rejected, they either stay in the black school or they turn to the NAACP to file a lawsuit to get admitted into the white school. The reasons for wanting a transfer varied. You might live closer to a white school and want to attend for, you know, logistical reasons, or you might know that the white schools obtained more funding in Virginia during this period of Jim Crow. Historians estimate that the white schools, generally speaking, received about four times as much funding, so they would offer more classes and they would have better facilities. So all these things led for African-American students to want to pursue that transfer, and sometimes with the encouragement of their parents or even the orders of their parents pursue those transfers, but those who aren't accepted are forced to remain in the African-American schools during that time period.
Thank you. My second question is, could you please share some of the stories of the black students? They had to be very courageous to be going into those schools, particularly if somebody's holding a bat.
Yes, absolutely. Well, in the book, I talk about one of the first students, female student, Carol Swan, to integrate the city of Richmond schools. This was in 1960, the fall of 1960. And the quote that I use comes many decades later, but the thing that stood out with Ms. Swan was how easily she was able to recall the mistreatment in school. And the way she describes it was, it wasn't outright violence, you weren't taken outside and beaten up, but you would, it was the tiny insults, the name-calling, books knocked out of your hands, pushed away when you go to the water fountain. She talks about, teachers would see that sort of mistreatment, but rather than stepping in and correcting the behavior, the teachers who didn't want her there either would let it occur. it occur. In New Kent County, I've interviewed a number of different individuals as part of my research. One of my favorites was a former principal at Fox Elementary School, Cynthia Gaines is her name. She talks about integrating the schools in 1965, one of the first African-American students in New Kent County. She would sit at the front of the room and run her hands through her hair and just be covered in spitballs. She talks about going to the, a basketball game at an away, at a away school, a visiting school, and as they announced to students, there are five white girls and there's one African on the team, and the audience erupted and, you know, kind of, not outright hostility, but probably surprise and some derision directed towards her. Even her own teammates, she talks about getting on the school bus to go to away games, and rather than sit with her in the bench at the bus, they would sit three or four to a bench off to the side, and she would have the whole bus to herself. Cynthia was quite a courageous woman. She said, "I would kick my feet up and ride." No problem with that.
The NAACP was very active in filing all these lawsuits. Where was the funding coming to support the NAACP in this timeframe?
That's a fantastic question. So I should say just a little bit about the NAACP. It's headquartered in New York City at the time, that's where the national office is located, that's where Thurgood Marshall works and the other leadership of the NAACP. The next level down in the association would be the state headquarters, which were called state conferences. So in Virginia, we have a Virginia State Conference, which was based here in Richmond, that kind of worked to implement the national office's policies in the state. And then the lowest level of the organization are the local branches or chapters. And in Virginia, there was a chapter in every city and county in the state throughout most of the period that we're talking about, with some minor exceptions. Now, the funding for the organization comes from local memberships. So each branch had to have a minimum of 50 members, they had to pay an annual due, and in the 1950s, that due was a pretty substantial amount, it was $2 a year. That money was sent to the national office in New York City, which then would send percentages of that money back to the state conference to pay for legal fees. So people like Oliver Hill, Spotswood Robinson, Sam Tucker, Henry Marsh, Doug Wilder, and others, had their own practices where they would litigate for criminal defense cases and all sorts of other litigation, in addition to the work that they did for the NAACP, for which they received compensation, largely, I would say, expenses paid, a small amount of compensation, but they did receive compensation for the legal work that they pursued.
My mother remembers being bused into Philadelphia. Was busing common around the country or just in like the southern states and occasionally other places?
That's another fantastic question. So initially, the Brown versus Board Education decision, as I indicated, applies only to the southern states. It's not until the later 1960s that the federal courts began to rule that segregation in other parts of the country, particularly urban areas, which was based on neighborhood residential patterns, not by law, but the fact that African-Americans wanted to live in this neighborhood, and, you know, you have Little Italy, you know, you have various residential ethnically-defined neighborhoods that were contributing to segregation. Well, the Supreme Court initially says that that segregation is not illegal, it's just by choice. But as the 60s unfolds, the court begins to recognize, with some NAACP prodding, that the segregation even outside of the South was oftentimes more deliberate than had been understood. So in cities like Philadelphia and New York and Denver, the location of schools, when new schools were constructed, the location of schools was oftentimes meant to perpetuate segregation in education. The boundaries of school districts were drawn oftentimes to perpetuate residential, excuse me, segregation in education. And so by the late 60s and even more clearly by the 1970s, courts all over the country were ordering remedies to address this remaining segregation in education, and in urban areas, it was almost always busing. So you'll see busing in Philadelphia, New York, Denver, Boston is one of the more famous instances because they have substantial riots. In the news more recently because of Vice President Biden would be Newcastle, Delaware, just outside of Wilmington, had a big number of incidents and protests related to busing and so on and so forth. So it is fairly common outside of the South, yeah.
Looking in the rearview mirror to the 70s, after Judge Marriage's ruling for mandatory busing for desegregation purposes, and hearing what you said now that currently Richmond schools are only 10% white.
Correct.
I'm just wondering how the NCAA feels about that now, and looking back to the 70s, if, was the busing a success or a failure with the resulting white flight?
Yeah, and that's a really good question. You know, I think from the NAACP's perspective and the proponents of school desegregation, what I would say is this, there was white opposition to the desegregation of every aspect of life. Whites were opposed to the integration of public spaces, hospitals, they were opposed to the desegregation of restaurants and parks and amusement parks and cemeteries and every aspect. But in those aspects of life, the whites couldn't flee it, they couldn't run from it, right? So as the NAACP pursued desegregation, every other aspect of life, it was successful. In the schools and particularly in the urban schools, whites fled that process for many different reasons, but nonetheless, the statistics, you know, they don't lie. And so I think what the NAACP would say is, in that aspect of the struggle, there were costs, there was a loss, but in the overall achievement, moving towards racial equality, it was worth it.
I want to thank you for your work. It's important, it's, I'm right here.
Thank you, thank you.
I have two questions. The first one is, how were the initial lawsuits chosen? Was it the plaintiffs who are residents of the district, or were they strategic in some way? And secondly, on the last lawsuit, was the New Kent versus Green the last lawsuit for the state?
Okay, good.
And I believe Hanover was part of that lawsuit, and they were dropped at some point, and do you know why?
Okay. Let me start with number one, and then you might have to remind me. So the lawsuits that were filed, well, let's say, let's start with the Prince Edward lawsuit. The students went on strike, they, you know, they sought NAACP assistance. The NAACP did not want to file a lawsuit in Prince Edward County because they knew that white resistance would be tremendous, and they didn't think that the students were, to be honest, mature enough to be part of this entire process. The next litigation is going to be after Brown in 1956. And the way that it worked is the NAACP went around the state in presentations and via the media and in conferences, and they explained what the organization wanted to do. We want to file lawsuits to desegregate the schools. They did not go out and solicit plaintiffs, they did not go out and pick plaintiffs, they explained the priorities of the NAACP, and then as people approached the organization, they determined whether that person was committed, whether that community was a good fit for what the NAACP was seeking, and then determined if they would take the case or not. They're also thinking whether it's going to be in front of a favorable judge, if it's going to create some sort of legal precedent, which is always good. So there's a variety of factors. So in the cases that I mentioned, Newport News, Norfolk, Charlottesville, they were seeking areas that had strong NAACP branches, strong plaintiffs, communities that were a little less resistant than, say, South Side, Virginia, or the Tidewater, I'm thinking of Charlottesville in particular, and areas in which they would be in front of judges that had more moderate records. Your second question was, is the Green case the last case? And no, that's not. So many of these cases that are filed extend over decades. So the Richmond case, Bradley case, that starts in the 1960s is going to go all the way up until 1986. And that's going to be ongoing litigation before multiple judges and so on and so forth. And then your last question was Hanover. So as I indicated, in 1965, the NAACP files more than a dozen virtually identical lawsuits, and they choose which ones to appeal based on the rulings that are handed down initially. So those cases are all over the state, Charles City, Brunswick County, Hanover-Goochlin, you know, and so the New Kent, the environment in New Kent, the details of the case, the plaintiff, the strong NAACP branch, all of those factors go into the decision to make that the case to follow.
It wasn't that those counties complied, they just followed it?
Absolutely not, yeah.
I think we have time for one final question.
And I will be happy to take additional questions in the lobby. Once we're done, I'll be sticking around for as long as necessary, and happy to talk to anybody that might want to.
At the beginning of your lecture, you talked about, you mentioned that you're arguing that NAACP's role is different than what most scholars think. How is it different?
So...
Has your role, has your argument different than what other scholars had?
So what's, it's a really good question. So much of the scholarship on school desegregation that has unfolded, let's say, before the last 10 years or so, focused on the segregationist perspective, focused on individuals that were involved. So there's Biographies of Harry Byrd, Lindsey Allman, there's books about the massive resistance movement, there's some books about various whites that were involved in the process, but there's very little about the African-American perspective on the school desegregation process in general, and less information on the NAACP and how the organization sought to implement the Brown decision. One of the things that always surprised me as I worked my way through graduate school was that the story had not yet been told. There's a number of fantastic books about how the NAACP won the Brown decision, but they virtually stop in 1954, and they don't tell, what did the organization do in subsequent years? So my first book, With All Deliberate Speed, as I mentioned, it looks at 12 different states around the country, and what I did was I sent out a call for papers from other scholars that were researching the NAACP and what it was doing to implement Brown versus Board Education in these different states around the country. And then we took chapters on Florida, Georgia, Mississippi, and some outside of the South, Indiana, Wisconsin, Nevada, and we put them all into one book, but each chapter addresses the same topic. What was the NAACP doing to implement Brown versus Board Education, and how does that change our understanding of the school desegregation process? And what I argue is that the NAACP's actions actually frightened state leaders and angered state leaders and forced the state to respond to what the NAACP is doing. So I don't view massive resistance as just opposition to the Supreme Court and opposition to Eisenhower's actions in Little Rock. I view massive resistance as a response to the NAACP, its success over time, its lawsuits in 1956, and what they were doing to bring about the school desegregation that they desired. And I think it's, I think it alters the way we think about school desegregation.
Thank you.
Thank you.